Hi folks, I'd like to call the meeting to order. We just came out of executive session. The Medfield School Committee entered into executive session pursuant to MGL 30A, Section 21A1 to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. March 14th, 2018, open meeting law complaint and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body. So, this evening, first of all, I'd like to welcome our newest member, Leo Brem. Welcome Leo. We look forward to working with you. Also, we're just going to move the agenda around a little bit because first and foremost, we have students presenting this evening and I know they've got oodles of things to do, correct? So, we're gonna move public input to after because I assume many are here for the budget issue, so we're going to hear the students first, have the presentation, and then have public input, so a better use of everyone's time. So, if we can please have the students, the high school advisory council, please.
Hello, my name is Eliza Vara. I am the representative to the school committee for the class of 2021. Not much has happened with 2021 student government since last time I was here, but student government and I are talking about selling sweatshirts that cost around $30 for our grade. Also, we are still trying to make people bring their class dues by emailing our whole grade. The freshmen are starting to be in summer mode even though it's still snowing outside. Also, the freshmen are enjoying the high school very much and can't wait to be sophomores. Thank you for listening.
I am Campbell Air, the representative for the school committee of class of 2020. Currently, the class of 2020 student government is looking at doing another fundraiser. We are in the process of organizing an equal exchange catalog fundraiser, selling organic and fairly traded products. Off top of this, we are also brainstorming ideas for next year. We would like to hold a fun event for the whole school. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
For those of you who may not know me, I'm Lily Bannister and I'm the rep to the school committee for the junior class of 2019. Right now, we're pretty busy. A lot of us took the SAT in March here at the high school and a lot of us are taking the ACT at nearby towns next weekend. We also just finished making our course selections for senior year. This Friday, we're having a fundraiser at 7:00 PM here in the auditorium. We're having a hypnotist show. It's being advertised via the Thursday packet that's sent out by all the schools and is also on the announcements. It'll be about an hour and 15 minutes and is our last fundraiser before our prom. So, after this week, we'll be fully in prom planning mode. We've formed our prom committee and our first meeting will be tomorrow. We sent out a poll to the junior and senior class and we decided our theme will be Hollywood. And after the hypnotist show, we will be able to completely budget our money and plan what we'll spend on decorations and food for the prom. Thank you and we're looking forward to a productive end of the year.
Hi, everybody. I'm Jack Lane, the rep from the senior class of 2018. So, right now, the senior class as a whole is looking to the future with college assistants coming in and people deciding and going on admitted student stays and things like that, which is a very exciting time to be a senior, especially with fourth term rolling around and senior projects launch this week. So, that's very exciting and a large portion of the grade just won't be in school. So, that kind of stinks for us that aren't doing projects, but it's great for them. Also, with fourth term, senioritis is in full swing as expected and I'm sure you teachers know that. We are, in terms of our student government, we are coming out with sunglasses for the grade so that ideally, everybody would wear them at graduation, which we think would be pretty cool if everybody wore the same ones. So, we're gonna try to push those. And we're also planning our class gift and we have some ideas going around, but I would also ask you guys if you have any ideas to come to me or any of the class officers because even though we have some ideas, we always like input from teachers and people who know the school better than we do. And with that, thanks for listening. Have a good night and sorry for the commotion next door. That's the drum club I'm a part of. We have one more song and then we'll be out of your hair.
Excuse me, Campbell. Sorry. Guys, can you do one more thing? And that is, we're all here because of you guys and I just want to... Campbell, I know you and your sister do a really amazing thing that you started at Wheelock and I'm wondering if you could pretty please share because I'm so proud of you and I'd love other people to know what you and so many other students do here.
My ninth grade sister and I began a Chinese culture club at Wheelock Elementary School last year and we had two sessions with four weeks each, teaching the students Chinese culture and things about the Great Wall and other interesting facts about China. We're doing arts and crafts and also informative lessons and they really enjoyed it and we've been enjoying it. It's really fulfilling and it's been really successful. We were... Everybody registered in the first few days and we had to put people on a waiting list. It was completely booked out, 20 students per session, so 40 students this year and then I think 37 the previous year. It was really successful. It was great.
Wonderful. Bravo. Thank you. Thank you. Jack, did you... You asked people to give you input. How could they best reach you if you had...
So, my school email is JWane2018. I don't know if I can go on that, but generally, if you put in John Wayne, that'll take you to be a shortcut. Also, the president, Julie Lutai, Anna Anderson, Gideon Long, and Caroline McCarr, the other officers. If you know any of them, go to them. Or if you know any seniors, tell them to tell us our...
Or they could go to the student council advisor.
Right.
To get to you.
Right. So, our advisor is Mr. Cowell and our two advisors, Mr. Cowell and Mr. Better. So, if you know them, you can go to them too and interview them.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we... Thank you. Thank you. All right. We'd love to now see the middle schoolers with their presentation.
So, thanks for having us. It's great to be here. I'm thrilled that we have seven of our eighth grade... I'm sorry, my back was tall of you as well. So, I'm Nat Vaughn. I'm the principal at Blake Middle School. And we have been working for the last few years to think more ways that we can give opportunities for our students to be really involved in their learning, directly involved in sort of a project-based learning approach, but also, one of the big things we've been talking about that you'll hear about is design thinking in that process for our students. And we have different opportunities in our formal schedule in the sense of required classes, but we also have some classes that for students who are not as... May not every class be in. Sorry about that. And so, one of the classes that some of our eighth graders are in is called a Tech Plus class. And it's a nice opportunity to really be creative and try some new things out that we may sort of pilot and then spread out. So, Diane Horvath, who's our tech immigration specialist, if you're on Twitter, you'd follow her as @TechMonster, like the Boston AH. And she's a phenomenal educator and Jason's here as well. Jason works with these students as well, eighth grade teacher. So, I'm gonna turn it over to them, but I just want to let you know that the two... It's ironic, it's about technology. Can you hear me if I just talk? Are we good? Okay.
So, there are two conferences. One is MasQ in the fall, then Learn Launch in the spring. MasQ is an organization that really is grounded in educational technology and they've been really thinking about how... We talk all the time, they talk about students, but we're not involving students directly. The last few years, they've had a session called for the Q Kids where schools can apply and say, "We've got some neat things going on in our schools. We'd love to have our students be part of it." So, we did that and our school was selected and had student representation. And that was true for MasQ and then also Learn Launch. What's hard is we have a lot of great things, but at these conferences, there's a limit of how many students can go. So, at each conference, we only have four students go. So, that's where of these seven, we had to kind of rotate through. So, that's kind of one of the bummer things about it. So, you'll hear a little bit about how it works in a sec and the students are gonna present what their projects were. So, in the Tech Plus class, the design is, the design thinking process, you'll hear about that. On the left is the poster that the students made when they went to the Learn Launch. It was under hashtag #inventforgood, #inventingforabetterBlakeMiddleSchool. You'll hear about what their projects are and I'm gonna really turn it over to them. And on the right, that's just a screenshot of one of our workbench tool areas in our major space. I'm incredibly proud of these students and I hope for them, you'll hear why. I will introduce all of them, but then you'll hear from them too. So, in no particular order, Carrie White, Ella Daly, Annie McCarthy, Emma Bannister, Ryan McNeil, Brian Vortek, and Jack Howden. Before they start, please give a round of applause for them.
So, in order to create our products, we had to use the design thinking process, which is a five-step process, starting with empathy where we could solve a problem for students, teachers, and all of us. Annie, Emma, Carrie, and I got the chance to go to a Learn Launch event, conference at the Heinz Convention Center. And we had 30 seconds to pitch our product idea to 50 groups from different students across Massachusetts.
At MasQ was at Gillette Stadium and unlike Learn Launch, we had a station and people came around to us and we explained the project and answered questions.
So, Emma and I created the hallway regulator.
So, our first step to creating our project was empathy. Our goal was to solve a problem for students and teachers at Blake.
The second step to innovation was define. Our problem was that we didn't know if someone was out of the classroom and it's important because the rule is that only one student can go out at a time.
The third step is ideate. This is when we brainstorm solutions to our problem and narrow it down to the hallway regulator.
Our next step that got us to our final project was prototype. We used the little bits, which are electric circuits and other materials from the maker space.
Finally, we had to test our hallway regulator. We put it up in Mr. Heim's room and received feedback. We had a few battery and light issues and later found ways, and later found that it was too complicated, so we simplified it and found ways to make it better.
So, in the end, this is what our final product came to be. We'll show you in a sec. So, the red was for if you're going to the bathroom and then...
The yellow was for locker, if you needed to leave the room to go to your locker.
And then the green was for if you're out of the room, for water. So, that was our project.
So, I'm Ella and this is Carrie. And we also used the design thinking process, which started with empathy and we decided we were gonna help students and teachers mainly based on like their projects and like the sound levels and noises in the background because the noises and sounds in the background were really like high in projects and it would be hard to hear the students and teachers talking.
The second step was define. So, we had to define a problem within the school. So, it was that noise levels in the halls was like high, so it impacted students in various ways.
And then we had to ideate and we came up with about seven ideas and we had to choose our favorite one and the most ideal idea.
So, next was prototype and we used multiple materials in the Blake Maker Space to construct a product and it took multiple attempts, but then we chose the best materials.
And then finally, we had to test. After our tests, we got feedback from students and teachers who saw the product in action and we decided that we are gonna use our product in the upcoming MCAS.
And in other ways, but this is our final product.
So, we have our remote here and it changes to different settings, which can put a message to any of our three signs. And a light will flash and it will be sticking out of different halls to...
So, like students can know when people are recording to be quiet.
This is the tech map by Ryan, Jack, and Brian. Our problem was that students in Blake Middle School or incoming sixth graders or staff members couldn't find their way around the school when they first walked in.
Our solution was to make a map with circuits under it, including copper wire, batteries, and lights. This map can be laid down in the office for any student to use at any time and you just have to click the room where you want to go to and it'll light up the quickest path for you to get there.
Our project got ruined in the rain at MasQ.
Thank you. And just a little side note, I am the vice chair and in June, we will reorganize the school committee, just for folks to know. Shall we move to the minutes?
I'm Campbell Air.
Okay. Perfect. So, let's move to the budget, please. Thank you, Jack.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you. I think we're at the point, we've gone through this budget three or four times at different meetings and now we're getting close to that point where school committee needs to make a recommendation and a vote for our FY19 budget. So, I'll go through this. I always like to start with pictures of kids on the slides because that's why we're here and that's what we do. If you want to go on our website and click on the budget, the budget icon, there is a lot of other information from FY19 that starts with the budget, preliminary budget numbers, and then all the presentations we've done publicly. So, to give you a good sense of what we do, I'm not gonna do a 30-slide budget presentation tonight, I'm just gonna go over some of the highlights of some of the choices that we have before us this evening. So, on January 29th, that's the longest budget presentation that we do and that's the public hearing budget, which was in this room. And we went through the entire budget, the process, all the background information, all the budget drivers, all that information is in that particular budget. But at that point, I made a recommendation, that's typically called the superintendent's recommended budget. I made a recommendation of 5.29% increase. Once the school committee votes that, or whatever they vote that night, it becomes a school committee budget. So, they approved a 5.92%, which was an increase of $1.9 million over the previous year. And you see it broken down by school. Again, this will all be up on the website tomorrow, but it gives you a good sense of what the breakdown is. Certainly, it costs a lot more to run a middle school and a high school than it does an elementary school. There's more staff, you know, most of the money that we spend is on staffing, so it just makes sense that those buildings cost more to run. And then at the February 12th meeting, one of the charges that I had was to go through and see if you can reduce budgets because at that point, the warrant committee, who makes the decision or recommendation for town meeting, was looking at a lower number. So, they were looking around 4% at that time. So, we went through the process and made some reductions from a 5.92% to a 4.86%, which at that point, we, in the original 5.92%, there was a recommendation to reduce one cluster at the middle school. At the February 12th meeting, the 4.86% put that cluster back in. So, you can see that the increase is 1.6 million. You'll see there's a decrease. The only item of decrease is the administration, which we'll get to when we get to the cuts. So, we looked at payroll cuts first. Again, most of our budget is on payroll. So, we eliminated the director of curriculum position. That was a position that Mrs. Cave has held the last few years and she retired, so it was a not rehire position. The secretary of that office as well. Sick leave buyback. So, teachers that started, that are grandfathered in, when they retire can have sick leave buyback. Not all of our teachers, but some of them can. So, we budget a certain amount for that and once around February, we get a pretty good sense of what that number's going to be and who's actually going to be retiring and we can calculate off that. So, we felt pretty comfortable at that point, reducing that by $45,000. Unit A lane change. Unit A is a teachers' union, so if teachers, their pay schedule is done by steps and lanes. Steps go vertically, lanes go horizontally. A horizontal move on that is caused by someone getting additional college credits or another degree. So, we have to plan for that during the school year and every October, we ask teachers if they can predict or get a sense of where they're gonna be the following year and we budget on that. Based on the numbers and the feedback we got from teachers, we felt pretty comfortable that we could cut $30,000 out of that. And then looking at our calendar for next year, one of the things that we felt we wanted to do is provide more professional development time outside of the school day. We've been doing a lot of professional development the last probably 10 years during the school day and that costs money, not only for the professional development piece, but also to get substitute teachers in. So, we added two additional, we now have six release days next year for professional development in our schedule and we felt like we could save $50,000 in substitute teaching because of that professional development substitute change. So, we felt pretty good and comfortable with our $310,000 cuts. Again, some of this stuff, like for instance, the director of curriculum, we had a lot of conversations at those meetings that it's not optimal, but it's something that we can live with for a year. I don't know why they just did that. Skip down. So, that was the conversation around those particular areas. I'm gonna get right back to where we were. So, we were looking at the payroll cuts and the total payroll cut is 310. So, we also looked at non-payroll, went through every single area that we could and started chipping away at many of the budgets that you see in front of you. So, the high school principal supplies, general supplies, middle school, high school, and all the elementaries, math textbooks, math general supplies, et cetera. Went through and just really cut those as much as we could, as much as we could survive, again, for one year with the intent of that. Some of the bigger ones that you see in there, athletics, transportation, we felt we could not, you know, we could use some of the increased fees of the school committee implemented, that we could use that to cover the transportation. Computer replacement was a big hit. We took $85,000 out of that. And then the textbooks adoption, that was another big one. So, textbook adoption for that line item means something that the district as a whole is adopting. So, what is, what was put in there for that is the elementary science curriculum. So, we've been working on that the last couple of years and we've been phasing that in and we wanted to spend between $30,000 and $50,000 on that next year. We budgeted 50, we took that out, so that was a non-payroll cut. We looked at professional development services. That was another area that we would cut in non-payroll, professional development conferences, maintenance supplies, high school field, athletic field, that isn't the turf field. We have, when we purchased that and did that project, we purchased a maintenance plan with that. That's looking at some of the other fields that we have, but we felt pretty comfortable that we could survive on what we budgeted the previous year and not increase it by 5,000. The same with the ground supplies and the maintenance contract and the school committee expense. So, that was looking at going through our policy manual and digitizing that entire policy manual. At the time of the original budget, we had a price, just as work with MASC, to get that price down, so we feel pretty comfortable we could cut 5,000 out of that. So, the total non-payroll was 270, so that was all those little cuts you saw on the last three slides. So, the total reduction at that point was 581, but then we added back teachers. So, we added back the three sixth grade teachers, that cluster, so it went from, it reinstated that three cluster model and then an additional teacher at Dale Street. So, we added that in as well. So, the total budget request went to 34 million or 4.86%. So, that was all done for the February 12th meeting. So, from then until now, warrant committee has voted and they voted a 4% increase recommendation. So, we're, again, if we're starting at the 34, 4 million, to get down to that 4%, we need an additional reduction of 284,000. So, at that point, we're looking at four FTEs or four full-time teachers and then technology hardware at 20,000 to get us down to the 284, 24. So, what does that, what do the four teachers look like? We're still working with the principals on that to see where that could happen. It could be a combination of existing and new positions, it could be new positions, we're not really sure, but I think that's, you know, one of the things that we feel strongly about is certainly, we've heard from folks that class size is important in the district and we want to maintain that class size and bring it down in some cases. So, our budget proposals that you'll see in the next slides address the class size issues, but also increase the budget. So, if you look at the 6.16% budget, it takes that 4.86%, so that's all the cuts you saw on the 4.86%. It reinstates the director of curriculum, adds a grade four teacher, a grade five teacher. Now, remember, there's already in that 4.86%, there's already a grade one, two grade twos, and a grade three in there. So, that, those four teachers are already in that 4.86. The 6.16 adds a grade four and a grade five. And the thinking behind that is if we're gonna really be committed to class size, it's kind of hard to have 18 or 19 in a sixth grade middle school and then have kids at Dale Street with 22, 23, 24. So, we want to maintain those class sizes all the way through. Again, trying to keep it within the low 20s in all of our grade levels. It also reinstates the elementary science. So, what I talked about with the textbook adoption, it puts that back into play, which is really important. Our teachers have worked real hard on that. We've done training, they've done a really nice phase in implementation, getting great results, positive feedback from kids and teachers and parents. So, we want to keep that momentum going. Again, that was cut because we could live with it for one year. For one year, we could say, "Okay, we're not gonna do it. We're gonna just do the same, some of the same kits that we've done this year, perfect those and go to another kit next year or the year after." But we feel strongly, if the 6.16% is passed, that we want to reinstate that elementary science. And then, you know, the enhancement to school security. The school committee has supported the last three years, $100,000 over three years to do improvements with school security. And Chief Meany's been working really, really close with us and doing some informal threat assessments to kind of give us a sense of what we need. He has a list of things that he recommends that we do. Teachers have come forward and recommended some, at least at the secondary level, cameras in the hallways. And then all teachers want to do the intense training that we did last year. They'd like to do that more often. They'd like to do it year to year. So, all that costs money and with that, we have $130,000 in for the security enhancement for pre-K through 12 in all buildings. So, that total increase over the 4.86% budget is the 429, which gives us over 700,000. Let me go to the next slide. It just shows the breakdown there and the summary. So, summary gives you a sense of where we are. So, difference from the 4%, that's zero. The 4.86%, the 5.92%, which was the original request, and then the 6.16%, so the difference is 713,000 over the 4%. Now, in that time, we've been doing this, we were working under the impression that that 4% did not require an override for anyone, town, school, anyone. In the last week or so, we've been informed that in order for the town to support the 4%, that's gonna be a $1 million override. So, that really hasn't, we haven't sat down and spoken to the town about that yet, other than just informally. We haven't seen all the definite numbers on that. The board of selectmen have not voted to put that on override, to my knowledge, I don't think they have. So, we're operating under the 4% being within the levy and anything above that being an override. We've been told since then that even the 4% is an override vote. So, that's where we are. I'll take, you know, questions from the committee if you have any feedback or questions on that, but I think we've talked about this a lot.
Is this just for the TV?
It is just for the TV, yeah.
So, I'll use my feature voice for a minute. So, at the last meeting, the committee authorized Jess and I to run a subcommittee to start to get a plan with respect to how we might support a larger budget increase of 6.1%. So, we distributed it tonight, which I gave to Michael Bucci just to give a once-over understanding. He's gonna distribute it to his board. It was off proposal for a memorandum of understanding. And just the background, I'd like to discuss in the context of the budget and I want all of you to know so that when we discuss the budget in the middle of the project. The last override in Medfield was seven years ago. I think it was about 900,000 and it was principally for schools, mostly for hardware. And since then, the town hasn't had an override. Before then, we had sometimes every year or maybe every any year, it was a series of years where, or 10 years, I think we had six overrides. So, when we had the last override seven years ago, we made a commitment among this committee to try to hold the budget within what the town is letting go. And then, you know, eventually, those, the costs start to get beyond what you can do. Our teachers' contract alone... Our teachers' contract alone consumes 4% increase every year. So, and that's, you know, teachers are important and that's just, that's the market for teachers. So that's not something to complain about, it's just a reality. So that makes it hard to add any programs, but, you know, in the last seven years, we have expanded for language, we've expanded iPads, we've expanded, I had a whole list of this last year, I went on a whole rant, somebody's seen on YouTube, but we added a, we're at the high school for kids who are transitioning back from medical. We added guidance counselors at the elementary level, expanded guidance counseling offerings at the elementary level. We've expanded a lot for us in seven years and been able to do that over seven years without an override. And so this year, I think we're just reached the point where we can't, kind of want to do that. The town's override, a million dollars in override. I understand a lot of that is also related to school because a lot of that comes from increasing health insurance, but some of it comes from, what's that?
A very hard piece.
Health insurance and pensions and it also, you know, it includes some other items that town meeting may not ultimately support or studies over record, new record, things like that. But, you know, everything is currently known as supported by town meeting, that's what we require. So what we would, what Jess and I plan to recommend tonight is that we adopt the 6.16% budget, which would require additional tax revenue of about 713, not about, of 713,164. Again, in seven years, we haven't done that and so we wanted to put, you know, you don't have to necessarily, the townspeople don't have to take our word for the fact that we won't be back for next year. And so we started working on a memorandum of understanding, which is in the members' packets tonight. You could put it on the website tomorrow on the budget section.
Sure.
Yeah. The idea is that we will negotiate this at a joint meeting with the selectmen. Jess and I, with maybe a subcommittee, selectmen card, because there are three selectmen and it's hard to get a subcommittee because that's just one person. But the idea of this override is that we would join in the town's request and join to support both the town meeting and then special election on override. That would raise your taxes. Just be clear about that. If you don't know what an override is, if anybody doesn't know what an override, did you miss my lesson last time? Okay. Explain the, the.
The two different kinds.
Okay, so there are two different kinds of overrides. One is an operating override, that raises your taxes permanently. One is a capital gap exclusion, which would raise your taxes for some period, usually about 20 years to pay off all of them. We do debt exclusions when we build buildings, we do operational overrides to fund year in year expenses. So the proposal would be a joint of the selectmen supporting both their request and our request. And then to commit on a long-term basis to, you know, for the three following years to hold our budget to no more than 4% increase every year and their budget, the town's budget, to no more than two and a half, I'm sorry, 2% increase every year. I don't want to get into all the details of this, but I'm happy to talk to the committee. We've built in some fail-safes here. I'm sure that the board selectmen will want some on their side as well, but Jess and I built in, you know, if there's an unexpected increase of 10% in the aggregate K to buy enrollment, then we may have to deviate from this agreement we have. Sometimes kids with disabilities move into the district and sometimes their costs are, you know, up to 300, 350,000 for just one student services. And sometimes when they come to us with an IP, we don't have any ability to change that and that can also, so we put that.
Well, if you want to, because that, that's the level of service they need to do, to educate all our kids.
So that's what Jess and I proposed tonight and if the school committee adopts it and offers to continue negotiation, we would expect that perhaps as soon as next week, we'd have a joint meeting with the board of selectmen to discuss and further negotiate and refine this memorandum of understanding and vote on it. So that we could go to the town, the town meeting and vote with voters, not just, you know, not just asking for more money, but committing to not ask, not seeking an override, at least for the next three years. And again, we've done it, we've gone several years without one, I'm sure that, you know, it's likely that that may extend beyond that, could be a commitment of that period.
And I think, you know, just to be clear that if we enter in some sort of agreement like that, that would, it would limit the amount of programs we could start or change or, or add to in three years. And I think that's something everyone just needs to understand straight out, that if we're looking at increases for, for staff at around 4% total, you know, we look at total staff, that's going to be eaten up by that. So I just want to be clear about that, that we're, we're not going to be looking at starting new programs or anything like that in the next few years if we have this agreement, which is fine. I just wanted to be clear about it, that that, you know, this provides some predictability for the schools and for the town, but it doesn't provide a lot of flexibility.
It absolutely cuts in other areas.
No doubt.
Priorities in some areas we wanted to add, we need to cut some other areas.
Correct.
But that's what we've done in the past. I mean, historically, our budget has grown. It just, to be fair to the warrant committee, warrant committee has to recommend a town meeting, a balanced budget. That's why they recommend 4% for us. I don't know whether the warrant committee, how they feel about this, but it's really up to town meeting and voters to appropriate the money. The warrant committee just has to decide with the money we have, how to balance the budget.
And Dr. Marsden, how do you feel this budget aligns with our strategic plan?
This here?
Yes.
I mean, I think this is, this keeps us moving forward with it. I mean, some of the things that aren't listed in here are the ones, are the positions we didn't cut. We had put additional special education, like those positions are still there and they were in the 4.8, we didn't cut any of that out there. But I think it's still, it keeps us moving forward. I mean, we have the five-year plan, next year will be year three of that, so we want to keep moving forward with that.
And related to that, so this builds in a 6% in the base for the next four years.
Right.
And that with the 4% is added to that.
Do we feel? It's very helpful. The 6% is very helpful.
Yeah, because that sets a higher base.
Right, right.
So do we feel that, to sort of relate it to Anna May's question, that that is going to allow us to continue the initiatives that the strategic plan laid out? Maybe we're not adding new programs, but we're not, we're not having to cut back, because I know we've made a lot of investments, but.
Correct. Yeah, I don't think we'll need to cut back on anything that's in the plan.
Right.
But we won't be able to add, if things come up, we won't be able to add unless they fall under those, those parts of the agreement that Chris had outlined.
So as a first time, I mean, I think you guys know this better than you speak to you guys, as a first-year school committee member, I really felt that it was incredibly important for me to really understand what the town finances are like. And I can say that I am an expert, but I've been to as many warrant committee meetings as I can make it to if I'm not here and many of my selectman meetings over the last several months.
Jess, do you think I?
Yes, absolutely. So I have been to multiple warrant committee meetings over the last several months, all of the ones that I could make if I was not here and I've been to selectman meetings. And I think that we all know that in Medfield, there is no cavalry. Nobody's coming down the line with, thank you. Nobody's coming down the line to, to give us more business revenue, to give us revenue that is not essentially based on, on our tax base. However, at the same time, I think you also understand that your property values are enormously dependent, if we're going to be cynical about it, and I am never cynical about our kids, but if we need to be. Our property values are enormously dependent on how we treat our children and how well we educate them. And so sometimes we have to come and say, this is where the rubber meets the road, that if we truly value smaller class sizes, making curriculum that is unified across an entire district, making sure that we are moving forward, we have to invest in that. This increase now level sets us so that we are able to keep our costs in line with what the town feels it can afford over a period of time. The warrant committee has to give, has to balance its budget based on the revenue that it sees in front of it. Sometimes we have to raise that a little further. There are going to be a lot of priorities that people present to you at the town meeting. There will be priorities around parks and rec, there will be priorities possibly around the senior center, there will be priorities around the schools, there will be priorities around capital expenditures and how we take care of our buildings. We have to think about that, but given what I've seen, given what I've seen in the budget, I, I have to say that I truly feel like we need to make this investment in our children so that we can continue to support them in the best way we can. They are a major part of our town and in fact, we have more children or a greater percentage of children per capita here in Medfield than almost any other town in the state. This is what we do, this is why we're here. And that is difficult when we think about that there's a population in town that doesn't have housing they can downsize to, right? As a town, we haven't planned for that very well. At the same time, we also have to meet the priorities of the children that are here right now. And that's how I have been thinking about this, as I've been looking at this. So I don't know how the rest of my committee members feel about that.
So Madam Chair, I would recommend it this time, is if, unless the members have other questions about our recommendation, do we open it, do we open public forum on the budget now, public input on the budget now? There's not a budget hearing, but open public input on the budget now. Once that's finished, we'll vote our budget and then open public input back for anything that's not related to the budget.
Okay, great.
Thanks, Les.
Can I open public input for the budget, please?
Do we just come up?
Yeah.
I've never done this, but I've asked a lot of questions, but that are, as Dr. Marsden knows, but never in a public forum. So the question that I have is.
Name and your address, pretty please.
Oh, Tracy Rogers, Seven Walden Court. And the question that I have is about the science program at the elementary level, which I'm completely for. I have kids in high school and then, well, one still in middle school, but going to high school, and they did the program that you're talking about now, where we went in as parents and did dinosaurs, I don't, I can't remember what it was, but I'm completely for it. But the question that I have is, was there any thought given to putting in a grant request to the coalition for that or having the PTO fund it? Because I'm just looking even on my Facebook feed about the amount of money that was made at the winter carnival, which could almost, in that alone, pay for it. And it seems to me like one of the concerns I have, and Anna May knows, I think I said this at the last high school PTO meeting, I'm a giver and I'm a spender and I say yes, when I was on the coalition, I never said no to any grant that came my way. I write a check to every organization in town, but these organizations like the coalition and the PTO, they are sitting on huge accounts. So when I see the science program, when I even see parts of security, I, I think that there's other avenues to get that money, that we don't have to bring it out as part of the budget to the entire town, because many of these things we've already written checks for. So that's my question.
Thank you, Tracy. I think, you know, looking at.
Sit down now? Okay.
I'll wait till you get back. You know, good, good points, Tracy. I know you've been very active in both those organizations with PTO and with MCP. I think one of the things that we look at, we build a budget, we think of curriculum as a basic need of a school district and that's something that the town and the district should fund and not be done through something like MCP, which is more enriching and innovative. I think that's the way we thought about it, but I think if, if we don't get this in the budget, then that's something we need to consider. I just think that, you know, that there's, if you look at some of the data over the years in terms of what has been spent with PTO and MCP, there's been a lot of things that every other district and every other community, they just, it's part of their budget and it's how they do business. We're trying to get to that point where an elementary curriculum where there wasn't one is really a basic need of a school district. It's not something that's innovative or extra. It should be what we do. So that's, but thank you.
I don't know if the teachers who were trained on that curriculum, part of that, part of the training for teachers, they helped us.
I don't remember. Yeah, I don't remember if some of, they paid for some of that or not, but, Michael, do you remember? I don't remember if it was one of them. But I mean, that's part of the issue is that our teachers were trained and we just had some training recently with science and it's just, you know, these are the, these are the kits that go along with the national science standards that, you know, our kids deserve and our teachers deserve to have that instead of trying to find a, you know, a science curriculum to use or have a parent come in and help out and it's, they deserve that, so.
And I think one other point to add to the coalition, the PTOs, each organization has their mission statement and as Dr. Marsden said, it really tends to be innovation and things that they believe the school districts should cover, they deny on the whole, you know.
Except when Tracy was there.
She had to fight.
No, I know, I know, I'm kidding.
It's a more core educational priority, a lot of add-on or a nice add, it's a core, it's like my math tech works for the high school. And so personally, I think it should be in our budget. And I, I don't think we do a bad job of exploiting or taking advantage of the opportunities given to us by the grant, the grant organizations and the town. As a slide in the full budget presentation at the end, it shows all of my coming in from elsewhere, including MCP and PTOs, but to me, curriculum and science curriculum is a core educational service.
I think just something to remember too, if we're looking at the requested number at 6.16 as 35 million, i- if we get that number, it's still going to cost about 38 million to run the district as you see it. We're paying, you know, 40-something people out of grants and tuitions and all those things. So that's just the operating piece. We still generate revenue to offset costs, whether it's through tuition, whether it's through fees, whether it's through grants, all that. So it, the real number is closer to the 38 than it is to the 35. Anything else?
Jerry Pot, Seven Curve Street. So at the last meeting, although it was a little smaller, I commended the school committee and I, I think again, you know, we each year see that we spend less per, almost every district significantly less and get more education. And I think the strategic plan, special education, the work that's done on social, emotional is an add-on in addition to just teaching our, our kids. So I commend the school committee for doing that. I just had one question around, at the last meeting, there were stipends for both theater and also I know with the music association, there are stipends that are paid out of those organizations. Is that addressed anywhere in this budget to be able to cover those as sort of, you know, core curriculum or core services that are provided?
So both of those are in the, in collective bargaining right now. So we're looking at stipends as part of that. The association has added some of those stipends that you mentioned to the, to the conversation, so it's still, it's still in negotiations right now, but it's, it's part of the conversation.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Hi, Suzanne Newark from 58 Granite Street. First, I want to thank you all for all the hard work that you've done on this. This is not an easy thing and most of us know that and appreciate that. I'm a little concerned about the security number being what I would consider low with what I'm sure that you're going to have to do with some, with everything that's been going on to spread 130,000, I think was, it was over all of the schools? Or you have any concerns about that?
Yeah, I'd love to have a lot more, no doubt. I think, you know, one of the things that we've done with the first 100,000 is put a lot of it at the secondary schools and we want to filter that down to the elementary. So we have some of the basic, some of the basic cameras and buzzer systems and fob systems for staff that we keep track of, but at all five schools, but we want to just add more to that and then look more to the elementary. We don't have cameras around all the perimeter of the elementary, which we do here in the middle school. So we're looking to, we want to do it in stages. I'd love to have a lot more than that to do that, but I think it's really focusing on some of the, some of the items that Chief Meeting has identified in this school, in the middle school, and then trying to do, duplicate what we have here at the elementary level. But I agree, it's not a lot. Thank you.
Just in case you missed the last meeting, the number of charities that were mentioned earlier, our per school expenditure in Medfield, that's exactly what's out there, the modern dollars we spend on average per student is about 14,000. The state average is 15,268. Just by way of comparison, Wayland is 17,416. Westwood is, what's that, 16,000? A bar graph.
About 16 for Westwood. Always about two grand more than us.
All that information, you want to compare who spends per pupil to other districts? We put this up on the cloud, I think on the school side. If you go to clear-
Cleargov.
... net.
Cleargov.com.
Cleargov.com. You plug in Medfield and it will show you how, not only what our people spend, but how compared to other districts. They identify top of the list, they're pretty much the same.
It's a clever word.
But that's-
It appears about 30 seconds.
We even as a town, traditionally we're very proud of the fact that we get the best value, right? We have the most educational, educational systems. It makes it the best in the country.
We have to plug close.
Or a lot less than even the state average.
Charge on my back.
But it's not the fact that becomes less something to be proud of or more something to be ashamed of, because we're not successful in letting other towns who have similar profiles, you know, again, when they set up those profiles, that does next to no for us. Everything we spend is not all of ours. We need to do, because I'm making it out of our pockets.
And also less state-researching.
Right.
In almost any town, because of the perception that they are, we are, if we look at across, I think it comes across before a county state, but we have another base. So, we got caught in that 22.
So, just as bad to the, what's the number, respect just to the average?
What, how much the budget would go up? 16% I believe?
17.
17%?
But we've got the same per, average per pupil spending. We're still proud of the work, we're doing a lot for a lot, for a lot less, and that's a lot. We lose tax. We launched our test to the corporation quite early, but at some point, you know, core services should come along. We wouldn't ask you to pay, the town wouldn't ask you to get a grant together for a pilot for a town purpose. I mean, the science of school safety, somebody who's responsible for curriculum development and across the district are for educational council. Other questions?
Please, obviously you can always contact any one of us, but-
Hi, Allison Robertson, 21 Kenny Road. What is the number you're looking at if the town override doesn't go through? So, you're saying this 4% is based on an override? So, what is the approved warrant committee percent if that doesn't go through? What does that budget look like?
That's a great question. We don't know, because they have us in at 4% again and it wasn't supposed to be part of an override, so.
We haven't gotten it.
We have, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank, good question.
So, just to, the steps that we'll go through is the school committee will vote on our budget now, just for our motion. Then that, that budget will go, we'll also transmit the, I understand the Board of Selectmen are going to take up the memorandum of standing at a future meeting. Once they do that, we'll have a joint meeting so we can discuss, really join the, the joint commitments that both boards are making in that agreement. And that's the first, you know, actually that's the first of its time in Medfield. I have mixed feelings about it because I think it does lock us in, but you know, we, we've always been, we've always tried to avoid overrides on this committee. There's not many, there are eight years we've had one and that was seven years ago. So, I don't have any good reservations about entering the memorandum of standing, especially because the town people so comfortable that we're not going to be back again here, here, if we get before most people were, this will probably be down. And it's happened with a lot of other towns, so. Then that's got to run a town meeting and we need a lot more than, or in this room, to show up at a town meeting, protect that budget, that's a meeting.
This is where I've been yelling about babysitters all year. I'm not kidding. You need to get your sitters, because it will never come up at the 8:30 time. What you need to vote on and what is most important to us, by virtue of every town meeting I've ever been to, will come up at 9:00 or 11:00. And you will be looking here watching, thinking, I have to get out of here. It's, you know, I can't stay anymore. And we saw the Martin Art building, 10 years ago. I downed like three boats, three, and I watched those three people and got 15 more and walked out, because it was just two boats. And more at school, conceivably a little more than 15 years ago, maybe over 100 spaces, 34 of them. It's important to get yourself to town and be able to see you now. Sorry, that was my small language.
And once it passes a town meeting, there'll be, there'll be an override vote. There's already an override vote, which after we vote on this budget, maybe it's capital coming up, or should we have Tim talk about that after we vote?
I was going to mention that, but after you vote.
Why don't we vote the budget and then Tim can talk about a separate agreement we expect to have. And that, so either way, there'll be an override vote, a special mention made if the Board of Selectmen, I think, are involved.
So, just to, at least based-
That's what the East has to talk about.
But as I understand it though, the, the reason why we're, you know, the original budget request that we requested, whether we're willing to accept, the reason why we're putting on a budget request that's above that is because the quid pro quo with that is, is we have looked at what a 4% increase does in the following three years. It wasn't done, as I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, but it wasn't done with a lot of, you know, total speculation around what we can afford. And that's also the reason why we have the safety valve and the parachute, you know, the parachute in case some of the, you know, things that are unexpected occur. So, I don't think it's, you know, it's not done, it's really done in a way to kind of go back to what we used to do in this town, which was to work together with the town side to make sure that these budgets were acceptable to the school department, but also reflected the fact that we don't have a big commercial base and we do have a seniors' population that is very concerned about their tax burden. And I think this is, this reflects the kind of balance that I think is the right formula for this town, what we've always done traditionally.
How much are we saving by not leaving?
Hey, it's, it's after April 1st. Wear, wear a sweatshirt.
Way to bring it.
35,070,0361 dollars, or 6.16% increase over F8.
So, can I clarify, so, is, is the intent to have that motion, and I know this is probably not do, you know, the way it would work sort of parliamentally, but how does, how does that tie into the memorandum of understanding? That increase in the budget?
So, once we vote our budget, then that puts a number, the memorandum of understanding has flags for what you cite, the town, or the town side and the school side, the term of right to make his work. That would be the number that gets plugged in for the school department side. And then the MOU also includes a total budget figure for the town that would go to town meeting. But that's the number actually we're going to plug in to draft.
And so, so if you vote for that, is it the understanding of the committee that if we vote for that, we're voting for that in the context of the memorandum?
It's, I think it's the understanding made that we will support further negotiation of the memorandum of standing, most likely. They haven't seen this, so it would be under the trust of the voting, approve it and then-
Well, in support of.
Right. The end of it is generally understood that this is a command we'll be making in caution with the 6.16%.
So, would there be a separate vote for the MOU?
At a later time, once the Board of Selectmen have informed. And so, you have, I know we circulated this with the, again, if you have authority, if we're voting, it could gesture out.
And in the event that the 6.16 fails?
I think we'd have to go back as a school committee and vote a new budget based on what is appropriate.
But I think to Leo's point, if the 6.16 fails, it's going back to a baseline of four.
I think if the 6.16 fails and an override fails, we're looking at less than four.
Less than a 4%.
Based on the numbers we see from the town.
And quite normally, the bottom of that elevator is-
And just, just for clarification, the override vote would be a separate one from, a separate school one from the town one?
I don't know. I think that's up to, the Board of Selectmen set the ballot. I think generally speaking, you vote.
Total town light operating but it override?
Yes, so you don't have departments competing against each other. We generally, I think we generally do it as one vote. There's just, there'll be a separate override for the Dale Street project.
Right.
Part of, part of our, to just and I and others talking about is, we, we know we have to get the override to get the Dale Street project moving. And so, we don't want to, you know, keep going back here, 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 for different purposes, sort of like ripping the bandaid off that. Did we get second?
And then some of the language I've also heard in this one, that, you know, we just need to, we need to do this, things will not only get better than this, right? Like, this is, this is our economy right now. It's not going to get better. This is the time when we need to kind of hang in and really commit to what's important.
Do we have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Please. All right.
Do you want to go to the, for the capital or?
Okay. Tim, can we, can we discuss the capital?
So, the, the other item that is subject to an override is the Capital Stabilization Fund, which maybe many of you have heard about. It's a plan, you know, we've invested a lot in town buildings in the last 15 years, including this one. And we have really historically kind of been woefully inadequate in funding the maintenance costs of keeping these buildings up to, up to speed. And in fact, this one, which isn't even that old, has some issues around it that, that, you know, probably with more investments earlier on, might have been able to be prevented. So, what, what a recent change in municipal law has allowed towns to do is to, and I'm not a perf, I'm not an expert on this, but as I understand it, has allowed towns to fund a dedicated sum of money. In our case, we're talking about a million dollars a year through a one-time, basically it's a one-time operating override. It does need to, there is a renewal process that the Board of Selectmen need to do every year around it, but it's essentially, it provides that dedicated funding every year for a million dollars to fund capital maintenance projects in the town. So, those, those would be projects that the goal would be to, basically, we've made all these investments in buildings to keep and preserve those investments, so that we're not looking at spending a lot of money on deferred maintenance at a point when it's going to cost us a lot more money. So, the theory behind it is, is that that would be a one, this override would, would do that, it would stay with the tax base, because it is an override, but it would provide funding for that as we move forward. What we talked about doing at the Building Committee and what we've talked about here at School Committee and at least right now, this is sort of not final, but is applying the first year of that override funding to the Dale Street School feasibility study. So that we're trying to be efficient about not asking for too much around overrides and funding the Dale Street School, which we think we can do with the, with the mechanics of the law, that allow us to do that with the first year's funding. So, that's the intent of the Capital Stabilization Fund and also how we're tying it into the Dale Street Project. Does anyone, it wouldn't be bad to get questions if somebody does on that, because that is a big vote.
Do you feel as though you have an understanding kind of what the difference is between the operating override they're looking at, that we've just, that would happen with the 6.1 budget for the schools? And what the difference is between that and an override for the Dale feasibility project? So, that's a separate issue and that is a town issue. This building, all of the buildings in town are owned by the town, not by the school department. I mean, we certainly have input into maintenance and everything else, but we, we are not actually the custodians of these buildings, that they are owned by the town. And that there is a study out there by our facilities managers showing that there's about $42 million worth of deferred maintenance over a 20-year period, or needed and deferred maintenance over a 20-year period. This is an effort to try to make sure that we aren't continuing to kick the can down the road and that we aren't borrowing from ourselves constantly, therefore costing us more money in the long run. So, it's really a separate override entirely.
Totally, yes, yeah.
And the proposal again on this would be to have a joint, I think probably, the Selectmen have discussed this at some length, I think, to have a joint meeting again, same group, and have us enter into this. This is a policy statement, not a MOU. Because it covers all that capital, it also covers targets for efficiency. And, you know, it has some guidance for reserves, free cash, a lot of, you know, proceeds of sales of capital. All things that are typically in the town's operating budget, maintenance for schools and other buildings that are in the town, have been in the town's operating budget, but when you have an operating budget that mostly funds salaries, it's been easy to take a million dollars that's there for capital maintenance and drive that down to $200,000, so you're not getting your roof ready to do more than we need, or you're not paying off your own cash trust fund, cost of efficiency. So, these are areas that in the past have been easy to grab from, to support the operating budget without taking care of the other obligations in town. The idea behind this policy is to ensure that we fulfill those obligations and are still able to fund the capabilities in town.
No question, I have a question on that, though. You want some? So, and this is, this is Justin Ziegler off of Vine Brook Road. So, this is out of pure ignorance. It sounds like, you know, I think as a member of the audience here, it's extraordinarily confusing when you're talking about one override versus the other, but then also the process of this capital development. And a couple of things that just come to mind is, what is the process? You're talking about a feasibility study and are we talking about something that's five years out? And then number two, what's the legality of sort of lockboxing up these kind of funds so they're not raided by other parts of the town going forward? And how is this actually, what we're talking about, but how is it protected? How are we actually going to remedy this 42 million in deferred maintenance that we're now finding ourselves in going forward? That's a lot coming at you, but.
Yeah. And I think some, you know, sometimes we, it's probably confusing and sometimes I don't think we do explain it well, because we're used to some of the terms and we know it's, it's hard to kind of make sure, we make sure everyone else understands them. But the, normally, the Dale Street, first of all, the Dale Street Project has been on our capital radar for dozens of years. It's, so we've applied to the school building assistance for years to get on, to become part of the program. Normally, those feasibility funds, which is the first step in the Dale Street School process, you have to study the solution, arrive at a solution that the MSP, the School Building Authority agrees to, and then you would go actually for the funding for the whole project. That's usually done by a debt exclusion in most communities. It's not obviously an operating override, because it's a one-time expense. This is a unique opportunity where we're talking about using this mechanics, which kind of kills two birds with one stone. So, we have, we have an ongoing maintenance component that gets put into, and it's, it's, it's S, I don't know if it's escrowed, but it's small E escrowed away for maintenance. It can't be used for other, other, it's under the agreements we have, it can't be used for other uses. The first year, we're talking about using it on the Dale Street feasibility to avoid having to do that debt exclusion on that particular item. So, I don't know if that answered your question, but that's, that's the distinction on that particular part of the override.
And it goes into a special stabilization fund under a new provision of the municipal-
Modernization.
Municipal Modernization Act. So, the override that would be required to fund school budget and the town budget just goes into the, the whole town budget. So, next year, the levy gets increased and we would agree, the same way we have in the past, to split up whatever the town's tax revenues are. But that, that amount will be dedicated only for one year. But then, that would be the basis for our budget.
But then the, that would be the base of our budget to increase, I know, more than the whole check for the next three years. So that just is an operating, it goes into the general tax office, the labor committee which, next fiscal year, make recognition on half ballots. That budget is separate from the million dollar override that was just into this stabilization fund. And the only way that stabilization fund could be used for any other purpose is by the selection and data voting down either. The selection can change how much we put in there a year, but it can't use it, you can't close out that. Once that being created, the stabilization fund, it can't be uncreated by anything other than that. Does that help?
Um, now we'll take a moment to have public input on other topics. Thank you.
Come on down, Katie.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Okay. My name's Katie Bender. I live at 19 Oriole Road. And first of all, I would like to thank the school committee, the superintendent, members of central office, for their dedication to the students of Medfield and for their time tonight. Um, I'm here to talk about full day kindergarten and the equity of the registration and lottery process. As a kindergarten teacher in Wellesley over the last 10 years, I've taught both full and half-day kindergarten with 22 students. I know firsthand the importance and impact that full-day kindergarten has in establishing a solid educational foundation. My third child is one of only a few who have been excluded from full-day kindergarten here in Medfield through a lottery for next year. Although my own child is lucky and has the opportunity to attend full-day kindergarten at no cost in Wellesley. I want her school experiences to happen here in Medfield, shared with her sisters and our neighbors. I'm here tonight because I think it's outrageous that only a handful of children out of almost 140 are being excluded from their preferred full-day kindergarten experience in Medfield. And I know that we can do better than that. Medfield needs to develop a plan to embrace the growth of full-day kindergarten. From start to finish, Medfield's approach to kindergarten policies and procedures is incoherent and inadequate. Starting with the fact that the registration window was limited to four hours on a workday and ending with the exclusion of only nine eager children from the full-day kindergarten opportunity in the recent lottery. We must adopt and implement a plan to improve accessibility and registration and most importantly, to include all interested students in a full-day kindergarten experience. The growing trend is clear, there are 317 school districts in Massachusetts offering kindergarten. 277 of them provide universal approved full-day kindergarten. 96% of kindergarteners are enrolled in full-day kindergarten in Massachusetts. Only 38 communities still have limited access to full-day kindergarten. Medfield is one of them. We are one of only 38 communities out of 317. Is this where we want to be educationally as our starting point? Of the towns who are also part of the shrinking minority, we know that Westwood and Needham have two-year plans to implement universal full-day K. And other towns like Holliston and Walpole have found ways to accommodate all interested students in full-day classrooms while maintaining a half-day program. Students in full-day kindergarten receive 40 to 50% more instruction than half-day programs. Dr. Marson, you've even acknowledged that the gap is significant, almost triple, and impacts students socially, emotionally, and academically. We cannot continue to place the onus of this gap on our highly capable but overburdened first and second grade teachers. The evidence is overwhelming and irrefutable. Dr. David Lucier, Wellesley superintendent, has said, quote, "The world is not standing still around us. Expectations are accelerating and we need to calibrate our system." The Ashland superintendent, Jim Adams, has said, quote, "It's clear through research that students who attend full-day kindergarten are more prepared for first grade than those who do not." Knowing all of this, how can we possibly accept a lottery system that implicitly produces winners and losers as a vehicle for determining access to public education? Only nine students out of 140 or more were excluded from full-day kindergarten in the recent lottery. Medfield must find a way to meet the needs of all students in the 2018-2019 school year and a plan must be developed for managing and expanding full-day kindergarten moving forward. Creative and bold choices must be made to address increasing class sizes in the early grades. We recognize that Medfield's budget and Memorial's space are maxed out. However, even though our glass is full to the brim, we still have the opportunity to color the water. There are models from surrounding communities all around us demonstrating how to make this work for the upcoming school year. One option to accomplish this is to have all half-day students incorporated into full-day classrooms as exemplified in Walpole and Needham. This approach would require adjustments, including negotiating space and hiring additional part-time staff. However, with the additional tuition income garnered by accommodating all interested full-day students, the model would remain budget neutral. Moreover, this model provides the opportunity to reduce class sizes for the balance of the day, benefiting both teachers and students and achieving a more optimal and equitable learning environment that also meets the needs and desires of all incoming kindergarten students and their families. Alternately, kindergarten class sizes can be increased to absorb the additional students as has happened in previous years. To be clear, I am not campaigning for universal full-day kindergarten. I'm asking on behalf of the nine students who are being left behind and for the families who are otherwise faced this same dilemma in years to come, that the Medfield School Committee act now to create and implement a plan that includes students seeking full-day K with the opportunity to participate. I know that when this issue is reviewed in a few moments, it will be easy to say that you are aware and disappointed that not everybody got their wishes met, but your hands are tied. When superintendent Kathy McLeod from Hawke, Hawkington was faced with a similar challenge, she stated supporting full-day kindergarten, quote, "Can't be about convenience or space. It needs to be about instruction perfectly matched for our students." Tonight, I challenge you as a school committee to dig a little deeper and reflect on the belief that full-day kindergarten is the best practice and to seek creative solutions to meeting the needs of all students who wish to pursue this foundational opportunity right now. Let's not set our children up to be winners and losers before they even begin their first day of kindergarten at Memorial. We can't leave nine students out in a lottery. We have a shared goal of meeting each individual learner's needs and providing them with the best tools and opportunities to flourish. Your hands are not tied, you're holding the reins. Make bold choices. Medfield can do better. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jeffrey Mancuso. I live with my wife and our two young daughters at Harstill Drive in Medfield. I've lived in Medfield most of my life with my family and my younger brother and younger sister. I'm going to be talking about the same issue. We were one of the other families that was left out of the lottery. We chose Medfield because it was rated among the best public schools in the state. As most parents do, we want our daughters to have the best public school education possible. Our oldest daughter Daniella is five. She is so excited about kindergarten this upcoming fall. My wife and I also, are also excited about this and are very proud of her about being so excited about school. She has spent the past two years at Precious Beginnings in pre-kindergarten as a full-time student in Dover. When choosing a preschool, we decided to enroll Daniella in full day, four days a week because we wanted her to be prepared and have every tool and opportunity to succeed and to be prepared for kindergarten in Medfield. We had planned on Daniella attending full-day kindergarten for a very long time. We actually, our other daughter, right now is enrolled at Memorial in pre-kindergarten and we changed her to full-day pre-kindergarten next year so they could have the same day. We're very frustrated and nervous to receive the email that there was a need for a lottery. I believe that every child should be allowed to have the same opportunity as all of their peers, especially if we are willing to pay an additional fee for it. 140 names were drawn and granted the opportunity to attend full-day kindergarten. On the other hand, only a few children were denied a guarantee for this opportunity. I, myself and my wife were actually at the lottery and it was kind of actually disgusting. It was women cheering when their kid's name got called. Someone actually recorded the whole thing and posted it on Facebook. It was, um, a really interesting thing. In addition to my own child's needs, there are many facts that support the advantages for full-day kindergarten, as everybody knows. I've read articles on the National Education Association's website discussing full-day kindergarten students show greater mathematic and reading achievement gains than those of the half-day program. They have more time to focus, reflect, and transition from activities. Teachers have more time to spend with children and identify any issues. These are, these are all great advantages that in mind, no child should be excluded from. Most of our surrounding towns are now full-day kindergarten and are free. If we as parents are invested in our children's education and willing to pay for the extra time, then our access to full-day kindergarten should not be limited. No child should be disadvantaged educationally or should be robbed of the same experience and opportunity. I don't believe that half-day classrooms for an entire year get as much exposure as needed. These children will have 50% less time in school than their peers. We are a growing town and more and more people are going to want full-day kindergarten as we progress. We should be able to accommodate anyone who wants it. It seems to me that the district is in favor of full day, that you see the advantages where it would not be offered in the first place. I hope there will be a solution as soon as possible to this issue so that, so that a few kids that were waitlisted can have an opportunity and for all kids in the future. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Is this working? Um, my name's Don Scary, 16 Flintlock Lane. I don't have a list, so it'll be real fast. Just a couple of things to think about. One of them was, um, is, uh, the, the professional development days for the teachers. I was wondering, I'm not really sure why, like, not, not tomorrow, but next Tuesday, uh, there's going to be a professional development day for the teachers. And, um, I'd, I'd wonder if you'd consider moving it to Mondays and Fridays versus having it in the middle of the week, just to give families an opportunity to have a long weekend. Not sure why they're, they have to be in the middle of the week. It's a small pet peeve of mine, but it would be kind of more fun if we could get those days moved.
We discussed it, of course, in two meetings, actually. We don't, we have a back work, but we don't, we form, but we, as a, as a committee, we allow our three-day weekends to, but we find that we have a hard time with, no pause. We want to make sure that our teachers are focused on professional development days and not looking at their own weekend plans and make sure that it's not just sort of built in as a, we had your full time, we have built in some predictability around that, so that we can have more of those professional development days and not huge during the day. That was a decision we took, had quite a bit of time, um, this year.
Yeah, I think one of the things we brought up too, that not so much the teachers, but the fact that we had half-days on Mondays and Fridays, that we can start on the, the exam on, on the Fridays and things like that.
Second thing, a little more controversial, um, due to all the snow days that we have, uh, it, what happens is that we wind up extending the school year closer and closer to July 1st or July 4th. And there's a lot of schools that are adopting, um, moving that spring break, the one in April, moving it into May so that kids get out of school earlier, um, versus if we have five days off or snow days, then it, it just seems like that prolongs the, the, shortens our summer, um, vacation. So, something to think about. Thank you.
You're, you're suggesting?
So right now, we have two weeks, right? We have February break and I think it's April. So, taking the April one or the February one, I like a winter break, but moving the, um, one from April because it's only like a couple of months anyways before you get out of school, why not move it to, um, the end of June so that kids get out a week earlier, start sell, you know, um, having their summer break a little bit earlier? I don't know if that makes sense, but.
Is that, uh, the vacation, so that part of the budget are we, and we, part of the net, we always, we don't bump up, up with, I guess, that end of the line because we have negotiated a P C union, be able to start before Friday, if that's what we like, we have to tend. But we start before Friday, so for that, my wife's in Weyland, they go almost a full week after the P C union this year. Also, Jess, in your studies.
Every, every tomorrow, ladies and gentlemen.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, so we'll move on to full-day kindergarten update. Time.
Thank you, Madam Chair, remember to clear. So, um, you know, thank you for the feedback this evening, I appreciate that. I know that in your package, I have mentioned that one of the things that I was going to do is make a recommendation tonight on the, on the full-day kindergarten. So I was contacted by five different families, some of which actually get into the full-day program. And talked a little bit about the experience with the lottery, but also talked about the cap that we have, self-imposed cap of 21 students. Uh, I gotta tell you, I didn't have a good answer why we're not doing 22, but as we did in the year past. I didn't have a really good answer for it. And, um, you know, Missy and I talked about it the last few weeks, last few days, and actually talked to the kindergarten, kindergarten parent, uh, teacher about it. It got a sense of where they were feeling about it. I gotta tell you, I don't know why we don't go to 22 as a, as a district, situations like this. Two years ago, we had a similar situation in which we had, I think, six or seven families that, you know, wouldn't have made it, and we put them, we put it up to 22. It didn't work fine. Last year, we had a class of 22. We had, we had six classes of 21, one class of 22. Um, I think what differentiates kindergarten with everything else is the fact that there's a full-time teaching assistant in there all day. And no other grade level can say that. No one, there's, they're in and out in first grade, in and out in second grade, uh, but not one other grade level has a full-time assistant there all day. And a full-time assistant that has worked with that teacher for a good amount of time and they work extremely well together as a team. I'm comfortable with 22 in the classroom, in kindergarten with a full-time person. I have no issue with that at all. Uh, you know, I think it, it gets us closer to all kids being in there. Uh, I just, just as an aside, there was no full-day kindergarten here five years ago. So I just want to put that up there. That was something that we did year one, uh, did a presentation, developed that. You know, as part of my entry plan five years ago, I, I, as an elementary person, I couldn't believe it wasn't full-day kindergarten here. And that was, that was number one implementation for my family. So, we did put that in there and, um, you know, I'm a former elementary principal, teacher, very committed to early childhood education, would love to do, would love to do kindergarten for all. I don't think it's as easy as some of the suggestions I've heard. Uh, I do want to thank all my friends though, I'll be, I'll be seeing them all this week. I'll thank them for adding some excitement to my name, uh, in their quotes. Uh, I, I don't have an issue with, with 22. I'd make a recommendation to the committee, I know it's, you know, recommend that your guidelines do not go up to 22 in kindergarten, uh, but I would also add that your guidelines were made prior to implementation for 22. So I would make a recommendation that you raise the, the cap to 22 for next year with the caveat. Here's the only issue that happens in this, in this scenario. If we have a student that moves in between now and the first day of school that has an individual education plan for special education that requires full-day kindergarten, we have to provide that for us.
And we could have four or five. And that's a better factor.
I mean, you could have 100. I mean, not that you could have four or five, but you could, you could have a lot. I don't think that's, Missy, I mean, how often do we typically get that?
Rare.
It's rare. It's probably going to happen because we just said rare, but I think, we need to plan for a year or a half. Maybe a full year.
It could be minus it.
You know, so I just, I think that, you know, we, we value that we always have value, value early childhood and we've, we've made a commitment to that in the last, you know, four or five years. And, you know, we see the limitations that we have. I'm not comfortable with taking away an art, art class and telling the art folks they need to go on art or taking away the music class. I mean, that, that speaks to that as well. Uh, the art room is not really made for kindergarten, there's a big old kiln in there. Uh, the, the music room is not designed for kindergarten classes, it's designed for a music room. So I mean, I think we have a commitment to early childhood, we also have a commitment to the arts in this district. And by taking that away, you know, we're sending a message that it's not as important. But we have space concerns. We're going to be asking the town for millions and millions of dollars in the next two years. We can't ask for them, can't ask them for another million for some part-time modules for a year. It just won't happen. I mean, it's not, it's not proven as a, as a superintendent, as a school committee, as a taxpayer, to put up modules in classrooms that you don't really need. You know, we've talked about if we, if we. You know, we've talked about if we, if everything goes through with the preschool study and new building, and we looked at the new building, the Dale Street, where we call that, is going to be a three, four, five building without the art option, so that then the moral of school becomes an early childhood center.
Assuming, assuming that's the case.
Exactly. Assuming they'll support that, but then that becomes all the preschool and all the kindergarten you want. We have plenty of room down, but, you know, we struggle with it.
Jeff, how long before the Dale Street project might be complete? Well, Tim, how many years from now are we talking?
Five years.
Five years? So, that's, what's the average lifespan of a quad of portable classrooms?
Twenty years.
Twenty years.
Sometimes a year.
I mean, so we're talking about five years of space problems that maybe Dale Street might, I mean, I kept quiet this whole meeting and you knew this was going to be the subject that got me off the porch, so...
We can't hear you back here, I'm sorry.
So, I was asking about the lifespan of a pack of portable classrooms that could be added onto the school's expand space. Sorry. So, I guess my question is, is I think we're being a little short-sighted about dismissing the options of being able to expand the space that we have for a building that was short-sighted some years ago, which was previously mentioned this evening, I think by 35 votes. And I think it should be, you know, echoing Ms. Bender's comments about the importance of small, you know, the early childhood development and your own, that I think we're being short-sighted, especially for the next five years, as, you know, predictably, our seniors and empty nesters are moving out and they're leaving homes with three and four bedrooms, and I don't think, you know, empty nesters are moving back in. So, I'm really worried about this coming summer and what the, what it's going to look like moving forward. I don't want to put art in a cart either, but as a temporary solution, since we can't just whip up some money to plug on some trailers onto our school, as a temporary solution, I mean, I like art too, and we don't have to call it art in a cart, but...
But that's what it is.
Yeah, whether you call it that or not, I guess my, my problem, I don't have a problem because it's a voluntary program, a cultural program, it's a point of representation, we increase the class size, so we have to do that. Essentially, because the state, yeah, the state curriculum for kindergarten is written for a half-day kindergarten program, and the studies show, yes, the first grade there's a gap, like third grade, that gap is closed. So, I understand why people want our first fully kindergarten, and I support people who want a fully kindergarten, but I don't want to create a misimpression that parents who put their kid in half-day, love their kid less, or go on their kids to go. It's a choice parents make, and if it's a choice parents want to make and, you know, are comfortable with an 11:1 ratio, which is what it would be, not a problem, I wouldn't suggest that we increase the class size in half-day because I think there are different considerations that go into that. But I also think it's always true every year that empty nesters are moving out and kids, families, kids are moving in, that's a constant cycle of that, you know? And it's not, sort of, new to the issue. So, I would be, I'd be reluctant to go to the boardroom and ask for another $100 for or whatever, I mean, that's a round figure, I'll go up, no, I'm beginning to focus where they can put portals up and, and home order, and I wouldn't want to do it in this, like, state, I think, school. I actually thought it was two or nine that they started registration, which they would not, not be in.
So, if we raised it 22, then seven out of the nine, all right. So, that leaves two students. Is that correct, Mr.?
Correct. Three additional.
Three additional.
When you, when you got to be a lot, wasn't it only six or maybe?
At that point.
So, were there additional registrations after the...
Additional registrations after the registration?
Yes.
Now, besides the inconvenience of, say, opening it up to 22 in a class because we, one, we've done it in the past without huge issues and because of the 11 to 1 ratio, my worry is the what-ifs over the summer, some, some kids, I mean, could we release a few? I know, it's painful for those parents who are on that waiting list, I get that angst, but is it possible to release a few, still hold, and then by the end of the summer when we have a clearer picture? Because I would hate to see, you know, kids moving into the district who require full day and now we're up to 23, 24.
I think the problem... People would actually live there first, you know, I mean...
There is, and, and people who would be in law full day...
No, no, this is, they require...
She's got, if you have us to an IP, you just have to, to search, it'll require a height factor. I think that most of that can happen, it works, you know? We would be on, that's a lot of the, for the IP, you know, IP, especially if you go all the time, and that's, you know, they, 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 you know, if you back to the municipality, but we would, in most cases, we should know about that, we are...
No.
No.
So, moving in, a full day K for an IP is, is that super kindergarten if you're, if you're moving here and you have a child on an IP, who's in kindergarten, that's pretty typical, you know, if you're on a meat of IP, full day K is pretty standard.
So, then, then, you know, where, you know, the possibility of those possibilities would be high.
Not to mention there's an inconvenience for parents who have the plan for alternatives, what if they don't? So, they have to go and pay to secure places and MAP and the other after-school programs that are around town?
Maybe that people who are, that may not be able to...
Correct. Like, and if they're, if they're waiting and they're hinging on that, they have to go and secure that, those arrangements in the afternoon.
Yeah, of course.
And in fact, we, we had a, what the question we did, full day, there was a way to, to resolve, right? It was all because some people had came off, burned that, or choices, and angry, and angry.
But that was, but that was the first, after that is...
After that, and we saw, it's not that, so... So, seeing how an undesirable art in a cart is, but also seeing that as kind of, I guess to some extent, I'm concerned that, you know, at this time, you have 14 in the AM, half-day K, and 7:00 PM, half-day, and we get kids in, I mean, is it possible that those two classes...
Well, I think some of the kids that are on the waiting list are included in that number.
Okay. All right. So, currently, so there is a little bit of a stock gap there, but in the future, I'm just thinking you probably will have to have art in a cart if we have kindergarten. I don't want, I would want to...
Yeah, it could, it could be something we have to look at.
But we do have that kind of blowout, where we have to decide, so...
We reduced the preschool room this year to accommodate the additional first grade classrooms. So, we're in a situation now, we have three teachers sharing one preschooler. So, they're running a program through that, which is not ready to...
So, what would be the book to you?
I have to ask questions now, and I have to, or, if I have a lot of time. Okay. Yep. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Ruth McGary. I live at 74 Pine Street. Could, is it, is there a possibility, because we have a space issue, and I don't know if you've already allotted for the preschool, and I don't know how the space works in the preschool, and I know it's like taking from, like stealing for Pete to give to Paul, but could we scale back our preschool to accommodate our kindergarten? Or is that not even, I'm just trying to figure out a way, because it's...
So, we had, we program, we eliminate one or two issues?
For this, which current year?
For this current year and for next year?
For next year, one.
Yeah.
One or one and a half programs, and for this year, we, we add a program this year, so we have to cut down for next year.
Right. So, that was against the additional first grade classroom.
Because what, what I'm hearing is that even with a greater class size, you're not really able to accommodate the want and need for the full day kindergarten.
You live at, you live at preschool that required, we have to, we have offered some, some of our preschools, but...
No, no, I know, but when I, I mean, when my kids were in preschool, there was just two, I mean, at one point, there was just one offering. So, I mean, I, I think preschool is really important as well. I'm just trying to figure out a way to make it so that full day kindergarten can be for everyone who's willing to pay for it. But I don't, I definitely don't want to, I mean, preschool is very important. I'm just trying to figure out, so is art, but...
Jeff, has there ever been consideration of leasing, leasing other space in the town?
Leasing other space?
Yeah, I'm not sure what's available in the town, but other towns have done that.
Actually, I have to tell you, Jeff, I've done preschool for a very long time, and I think actually if there was space in midfield, I would have found it.
Yeah.
Same thing with...
Just that I'd ask.
So, I guess I'll, I'll be going to support super...
Nicole Crocker, 29 Hatters Hill Road. I don't have an incoming kindergartner, but I have two coming in two years, and their grade is already projected to be larger, at least, I think, by 20 kids. So, I feel like this is such a short-term solution. So, I think we need to start talking now, like, about the next year and the next year because adding one, one child every year to kindergarten, we're in the same situation we're in for first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade this year. So, my concern is we're just going to keep growing the class sizes. So, we need a long-term solution for the growing classes, especially in kindergarten. So, I think adding a child, I'm not saying you can't add one, but I think adding one every year, we need to plan ahead. We know the classes are growing. So, thank you.
Can I just, sorry, Chris Potts, can I just add, just a clarifying question? Where is MAP on their enrollment? And are they maxed out? And also, do I understand that on the, the two half-day kindergarten classes, are they maxed out at space two? I'm just not sure of the total...
The MAP, MAP is not, not for...
No, I understand, but on the, but on the part-time, on the, the, the two part-time classes that we have...
There's room in, there's room in full, and...
There is room.
So, currently, I think that the question I asked Chris was to clarify that currently AM kindergarten, 14, that assumes that the children who work currently...
Missy, you have another question today?
Eighteen right now in the morning, at 7:00 PM.
Okay.
But that is also...
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
So, there's still room in here.
Right, okay. Because I, I mean, I just, when I look, there's a couple of us here who, you know, when you look back and you had your kids in half-day kindergarten and half-day, the other half MAP, it was, you know, looking back, I would do that again in a heartbeat. It was just an unbelievable combination, so, but it's hard to give that perspective back to younger, to parents with younger kids and think that that full day is the only thing that's the best for their kids, and they don't realize that that creative outlet that MAP gives them as a supplement to half-day is also another option that I just...
There are more models, even more of a pro-life family.
Right, exactly.
But I definitely also understand that people want full day K.
Oh, absolutely.
I'm in the town, so I was surprised that you didn't have it. And I've done it both ways.
Yeah, absolutely.
Actually, I have two kids, and I've done kindergarten three times.
Right, absolutely.
So, you know, like, I understand.
Yeah, okay. I just was looking for the capacity piece. Thanks.
I, I know the specifics for everyone, maybe you offer a location for us for half-day classes for the full program, 22, that's a completely work with the families of six to, 20, and we are talking only for the, for the, for the, the options.
Second.
All right, do we have a, a second?
Yeah.
Thank you. On the paper?
Aye.
Thank you.
Can I ask, or just on that, I did hear a lot of feedback on lottery classes and stuff, and I think, you know, we have tried, you know, almost successfully, we've tried as a committee and as a district to be transparent, I think, adding to that lottery. In an open session, was in the tech, to try to get rid of anybody who was going to say, you know, such and such, who had a relationship with a person, or, you know, that's why they're giving in. But I think we could maybe try to really do that, you know, with less, maybe a less public way, if we, if we, if we do it, it'll, it'll, I don't have a parent, I, I don't like to deal with parents also in there, you know, it is, you know, that probably leads to, leads to a lot more field and a lot more, this department, this is not, I'm saying, 20, 21, 22.
Chris, please, he has to add to that and say that if that process was a little more friendly in the registration process, it would take that away with that one day of standing in line, which I did this year again. So, I think that adds an insult to injury, not to mention the, you know, the dual-working families, the burden that it puts on the dual-working families, particularly some of the educators, a lot of the educators that are dual-working households in this town. We can, we can, we can digitize that process. I'm pretty sure of it.
We're on the Madeline Grant Scholarship, we need some funds.
Thinking about it, Chair, so the information, which is in your packet, student has sent in her first semester grades from Cornell, doing really well, and in order for those funds to be released to her, or need, have a official vote from students, or ask if you go to release these funds?
So, just to, for the, the, for the Madeline Grant Scholarship, it can't be released until after the students finish the semester, so we need to vote to release the fund. You don't have to provide the deposit, you know, or...
Moving to Madeline's, our rule of...
On the paper?
Aye.
Great.
Congratulations, Madeline, here, Amanda, if you're out there watching.
What happened?
So, we've covered the other items since the posting until March 28th.
Tim, over there.
Yeah, thank you, Tim. And, oh, business?
Yeah, a little bit.
Okay, all right, that. And facility repair update?
So, that was in your packet, so that was just an update from Jerry, based on our last meeting, some of the items that came up as part of the power outage, and he updated on that. I don't think we had any questions, I don't think we did any current. If you have any questions, I can ask them. If I can't ask them, I'll have Jerry go back to them. Jerry and I have made some, some good progress on that. It's certainly costing, that's going to cost a lot of money.
Is there a statement where you...
I wish. Those are always good when we got those and get some sort of reinforcement.
All right, district recognition?
Just want to thank our students for coming this evening, that was great. I encourage people to continue to look at hashtag, for the PS, all the other things going on within the district. Next week, we have our digital learning day, and people are really excited about that. We have George Carlson's coming as our keynote speaker, and that is supported by MCP, and we go to grant for that. So, really excited. Our teachers do a phenomenal job. We have folks from, I think, the 50th School Districts coming to see the work that we're doing, and other presenters as well from other districts, so looking forward to the good day. And we have it in April now because of the snow. We've had...
We wouldn't circle that, so...
Yeah, no doubt, no doubt. That's all I have.
All right, great. And future intended items, on budget, I'm ready. And do we have any dates?
To start, qualifications, if each success, we brought in over $2,500, because all of the, the, the Jimmy funds, so, things like that. And coming up at the high school, April is acceptance month, so Student Council's one of two main events for that. The first, we're bringing back our sticky note wall, if you remember last year, where we paired up with the Harmony Club in high school, and we created a big wall of sticky notes where every student in every grade, freshman through senior, they had a sticky note, a personalized message that had been written, and then, and this cool claw, those students could take down a sticky note. And we're also filming a video for the Spode Works and the Word campaign, which we're going to be filming at lunch this tomorrow, it'll be presented April 12th. April twelfth.
Thank you. By the way, I love that sticky note wall, if, if people should really join, or see it, it's a thing of beauty, so it's wonderful, thank you for doing that. Any updates, anything to share?
Made it through my first meeting.
Yeah, so.
It's true.
Um, uh, well, I'm sure I had something, but then I blanked, because it's about. Oh, I know, there are, we had a school committee office hour on Thursday, which NMA had to do, and that was for parents, um, but if you wanna put them in your calendar, uh, Wednesday, April twenty-fifth, from nine to ten, Dale Street, and then Tuesday, May twenty-second, from seven to eight, at the public library, certainly, at least two of us would be there, oh, two of us, sorry, no ones, um, but we'll be there to take your feedback, if you feel like that's a, an easier place to be able to have an exchange of ideas than standing up at a microphone announcing your address, please feel free, because I'm always happy to talk to people. We can also always reach out through email, Facebook, Facebook, and.
I want to say congratulations and welcome to Liam, Leo, and I congratulate everybody who's elected, especially Eric who's here, he would have, he would have, uh, cross phone commissioner. I'm a master right. Okay, I, uh, I think we sat in a lot of these, there's been a lot of, uh, I think people get the sense that it feels as if the town is just in, it's in crisis, or the school is, and I guess I just want to get in there and say, that's just not the case, when we face challenges, they shot at their day, we always have, we have, just finished eight years off the committee, uh, and we're happy to finally, you know, I, I, for several years, I sat in an empty room, you know, friends up here, and, um, nobody came, then after a few years, Chris and Jerry started out, but for the most part, she's been around so many years, uh, so we're happy to have the input, I know you're frustrating sometimes, you don't get everything you want right away, um, but that, this is part of the process, and so, you know, I appreciate it, I, I have a side effect when somebody, I mean, people will be at our meeting, where everything's sort of gone, and it's fine if you don't come to meetings, and it's fine if you're not so appreciative, but it would be nice to have more feedback, um, on a, on a more ongoing basis, not when, on an emergency basis. I hear from people that the information is out there, and I have to say, it's just not true, um, in, in this, since Jeff became superintendent and Mike became business manager, we talk to people on the market, we talk to people in select, it's been a more transparent budget than ever before, right, you know, I love, love working with him, I love him in the trials, but it's been a much more transparent budget than ever before, and maybe that's why you all are here, able to tell what you're not getting, um, but we have, as a district, become a lot more transparent, and we've done a lot to get all the information out there, but we can't, sort of move you, I had a neighbor I saw this weekend who said, you know, starting asking me all these questions, I said, we had, you know, several hundred hearings, we had several meetings, never heard from you before, um, and I think we find it different now because NMA sent that letter, but we'd love to hear from you, um, but I, I wanna send a message that, you know, we are doing what we've always done here, and we're proud of what we do here, we're proud of this district, we're proud of our teachers, and we're also proud of our students.
Thank you, Chris, I just.
Okay, Chris, I'm, okay.
I'm sorry, I just, I'm very new to the town, all right?
Welcome.
Also very new to the town, um, I just don't understand the process for, like, when does the voting happen for the budget? What is, like, what's the next step?
The, uh, the next step is that, because we specifically are proposing a gate, or a memorandum, there'll be a meeting, a joint meeting, school meeting, a select, Jeff can push that up right now, and town meeting, town, immediately we have a full town meeting, so if you don't show up and keep putting people who are close to your position due, you lose.
You raise your hand.
You raise your hand or, or, or.
It's April thirtieth.
After that, because we're proposing a tax override, there'll be a special election May.
So the town's got to be June.
So there'll be a special election in May or June where you go vote again, hopefully vote in last, you'll hope to go vote again, down on that, so, you're not, I should vote if you're so high that you have to do that.
But you have to be a registered voter in Meddale in order to vote at town meeting, even being admission, okay, because then you check off voter lists, so, but they give out free water, so you got that.
So, just to clarify, we want, if, if someone is a proponent that is wanting a six percent increase, or are we wanting to tell people to cut to that April thirtieth town hall meeting, like, and recruit all of the, you know?
Only, only if they're gonna vote for it.
Okay, so that's the important one that we have to have. I'm a big deliver, believer in the democratic process, everybody should come, everybody should hear the story, everybody should know, right? We can't all agree about everything, and we have to work these things out for our community.
So what?
But if you prefer it, I would really.
We can push the information about how we gather through, just made more on too much, but you can't spend school money to advocate for an election, so once we get past town meeting, you all are gonna have to form some kind of committee to advocate for votes of the election, and we can't believe that, but we can use school resources to advocate for town meeting, because that's for budget function, so you'll see information about the budget pushed out on our website, through emails from Jeff and NMA, um, that's all, you know, we, we will push that information out up until the day of town meeting, after that, it has to come from some political people, right?
I just have a quick question, um, the meeting that you have, the joint meeting to go over, that'd be override prior to the town meeting, is that a closed meeting or is it open?
There are no such things, it'll be an open meeting, it'll most likely be in the selection chamber.
Awesome.
That's about all.
I just don't know if it'd be beneficial to you to have more support there for, or just.
Yeah, probably would, I don't know where the select are on that, so, go to work, there are.
Plus, it's, the things you learn about your town are really important, right? You get little pieces of information that you just didn't know, and it does help you understand how decisions are made, and how people are really invested in our town, they may have different positions, but I don't think that there's anybody there that's like, I think I'm just gonna come here and really screw this up, that's not, people are invested, so, you'll get to see the inside.
All right, and I just want to mention a few things that I'm particularly proud of, um, because actually, a lot has happened since the last meeting, and besides putting for patients, which, uh, got rave reviews in my house, the Special Olympics was beautiful, the fashion show, James, you were awesome at the. Such a fun event, and they're looking for, and Miss Amazing, another beautiful event, um, string fling, the kids were phenomenal, and it's beautiful to see, starting out, I could tell high school, Micah, our, our kids did really well in Micah, and, um, as Jess mentioned, the office hours, I encourage people to come to that, so, thank you.
Jeff, can I just quickly say, I have a, a big, just, Mike, it'll be, this weekend, it's a Dale Street course, and they're, I'd say, friendly competition, several districts around the even.
Cool. Yay.
Second.
There.
Bye.
Thank you all for coming.